We have a motion to return to regular session.
I'm going to move in, Chair.
Steve, thank you. The second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Certification, close session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712B in the County of Virginia, 1950, as amended each member of the board supervisors upon roll call certifies that the best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the board supervisors. Any member of the board supervisors who believes that it was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure, and if a heard judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believes a departure has taken place? Being none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closing meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Kim Lovelace?
Yes.
Madam Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Greedy?
Yes.
David Dean?
Yes.
Horace Christie?
Yes.
Rebecca Tha?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Right, let us stand for invocation and remain standing for the clear space. Our heads.
Thank you, dear Lord, for giving us another day. Thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon each one of us, our families, friends, and our fellow people in the Russell County. Please give us the strength and wisdom to do and guide our decisions that we may put your love first, our friends, our family, and our fellow citizens. Surround us with all walks of life and all backgrounds. Help us to do what is best for our folks in this county. Bring us together in high moral character. Help us to be the best that we can be. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Carl. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve.
Madam Chair, I need to make an amendment to the agenda. Is this where I do that?
No.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'd like to amend the agenda to ask for a letter of support for the C Prop application that was submitted on March the 23rd for the destination center, please.
So you're making that motion, want us to amend the agenda, please. All right, you have a second?
I'll second it. We already had a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have to, we're going to rescind the first one?
I will draw my second to peanuts.
She's just moved to amend that motion that we accepted agenda, so if you, if she gets a second and you all approve that, then you can approve the agenda or you can withdraw it.
Okay. All right, so she has her second, so we can head with that. All right, Horace, your second, so we will accept her amendment and approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
And want to oppose. Blue, where would you like to?
And I apologize again for not taking care of that earlier.
Where do you want to put it?
I'll ask that we put it under, I guess, under the county administrator report, please.
The number 10.
Yes, ma'am.
There's the order. On the March 23rd.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, at this time then, we'll open up the floor for public comment on the V Doc secondary year plan for fiscal year 21, '22 to '26, '27. So, any comment on the V Doc secondary year plan, six-year plan?
It's going to be in the V Doc guys right here.
Right here.
Oh, here you are.
Right, right.
Didn't recognize you, John. I apologized in the mask.
So, would you like to make any comments about your six-year plan? Anybody? Okay. Seeing, seeing no one has any comments on the six-year plan, we'll close that. All right, the second thing on public hearing is that we have our Russell County cigarette tax ordinance. Any public comments on that?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir. Step right there.
My name's Sean Vance. I live in District 1. I've read through this. I got this today. I've read through this. I should have took more time, I'm sure. The taxes, I'm putting them both kind of together, the cigarette and the mail tax. I understand that the county needs money to run all of it. You know, we are coming out with a pandemic. Is this the best way to go? Seems like none of the persons is really paying the prices, the small business. I mean, if you look at the exemptions on the one, if you're a church or government or anything to do with county or anything like that, everything's exempt. So the guys who are collecting all the money and responsible for collecting the money would be the small businesses. If I'm incorrect on that, somebody can say it.
You're talking about food tax?
Either or. We only get more of the food tax than anything else. I mean, keeping records for up to two years? I mean, this guy's running the whole business. Now you expect him to keep records for two years? And then hit the penalties if he makes a mistake? Am I reading the wrong thing?
On the cigarette tax?
Well, I'm on the food ordinance. I'm putting them both together because they're usually standing twice. You know, I mean, if you look through some of the exemptions and so forth and so on, but if you get into the part where the, you know, payments and collections and all that kind of stuff, I mean, you should know this. I mean, am I looking at this the wrong way? Or are you all looking at the same way I am? I mean, if, you know, you have a guy running a small business coming out of a pandemic and now he says keep records for all this stuff, up to two years, and everything else? Are we underneath the ideal that we're going to collect the taxes from people passing through Virginia? And if that's so, you know, not through Virginia, from county to county, you know, you come from Wise County, going to Evington or Washington County, and you figure we're getting their money, but where's the reporter, the, somebody did a report to study that? Or is somebody just come up that that's what we're all thinking? That more people from Wise County comes through?
Madam Chair, may I attempt to answer?
Sure you can, ma'am. It's my time.
Concerning your question, as a business owner and a taxpayer, I mean, I pay Virginia tax, I collect Virginia sales tax, and I pay it back to Virginia.
Right.
There's also a form there that is for your meals tax.
Right.
And so when you start filling out your form as a business person, that form allows you to plug in those numbers and you pay it back to the state. So the state has already got all that set up. It will pull off localities tax also. So when you plug in your county, it pulls off the certain percentage to come back into your meals tax. Now, I think that, will the state taxes go through that also? Or is that a separate thing that we have to do as far as the county goes?
That will be a cap. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The cigarette tax and the mail tax is a local tax. Now, the record-keeping component is, they're already keeping records for this, for the state reporting.
Yes.
This is just a different reporting to the county and the state. It has to be, the state already requires it by law.
So to answer his question though, doesn't that, that locality, doesn't that go back through the state and come back to you, or does it come separately?
It comes back directly to the county.
Yes, but does it go through the state first?
No.
It comes through the county.
It comes through the county.
So there's a reporting on that certificate when you report food and sales tax, is what I'm thinking. You're going to have the same recording that I have to do as a business person if I'm selling goods and services and food.
I understand that, I guess, to a certain point, but it still don't, the way I read it, it seems like you're putting a lot of the burden onto the business person. So as a business person, as you said four times, you want that responsibility?
I already have that responsibility.
But you chose it. All right? Well, now these people are going to be pushed upon to do it, all right? Now? Am I looking at this the wrong way? Anybody?
Do you run a business that this will be affected on?
My family does. What does that have to do if I run the business or not? I mean, I don't think I-
I'm just curious.
I'm not figuring that I'm agreeing with this, is what I'm saying.
I understand.
What difference does I make if I'm running a business or not? Especially what business is of yours?
All right, are there any more comments?
Sorry.
On the cigarette tax? Go ahead.
All right, Jennifer Thomas, just cigarette tax. I have not had the pleasure to read that, unfortunately. I just- I just wanted to know if it had vapor products in it first. And I'm not opposed to that. I just, the only thing I was going to say, if it did, you know, we just got a 6.6 increase, that's like $7, $8 on the bottle. So I just wanted to make sure the world was aware. If we do want to do a vapor tax going forward, there are, it's not as simple and cut dry cigarettes, you know, because there's different milliliters, different nicotine levels, so it would be a little more in-depth. But since it doesn't, then I will present my comment.
Thank you, guys. Well, I don't have a comment, but my understanding at this time it is simply tobacco products, correct?
Cigarettes.
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 Well, tobacco products are considered, vape products are considered, tobacco's aren't here. Let me come back up. Vape products are considered tobacco products. They carry that same licensing currently. But it just so happened this year that we went into that, that we got a 6.6 state percent, 6.6 cents on each milliliter from the state. So it would be in addition to that, so I just wanted to make sure that if there was one, how that would lay out. Would it be per bottle? Because you know, people get different sized bottles, so that might be something you guys will look at in the future and we can talk. Thank you.
All right, any other thoughts on the cigarette tax ordinance?
Madam Chair?
It's step four.
Letter of support I'd like to present to the board on behalf of the Russell County Prevention Coalition. Good evening. My name is Dustin Key. I am the Secretary of the Russell County Prevention Coalition and a prevention technician with Cumberland Mountain Community Services. Many of you are familiar with the Russell County Prevention Coalition. We have been around since 2014. We are a broad group of local stakeholders spanning 12 different sectors of the community with the aim of reducing substance abuse, especially among youth. One of our primary objectives has been reducing the use of tobacco products by youth. As far as this, we formed the We Don't Support Underage Use Campaign that you see on a lot of billboards, school buses, cars, all over the place. We also conduct annual tobacco retailer education visits and we do science-based prevention education curriculums in our school system. We would like to put forth our support for the cigarette tax ordinance as it's presented. In your packet, you've got some information from the National Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. It includes a lot of studies and evidence about how increasing the price of cigarettes can work very well, one of the most effective tools that we have, to reduce the use rates of cigarettes among kids, as well as adults. So they refer to it as a win-win-win as far as for health, for budget, increasing much-needed local revenue, and then also politically as the best majority of people support a cigarette tax. Until last year, Virginia had the lowest tobacco excise tax in the nation. We were 50 out of 50 at 30 cents a pack. Last year, the state doubled that tax from 30 cents to 60 cents, and Virginia still ranks as the 44th highest, still among the lowest in the nation. So it's very glad to see that you assembled the local ordinance, tax rates for cigarettes. That again shows that a lot of localities in the region already have a cigarette tax. So we would wholeheartedly and enthusiastically encourage you to adopt this ordinance to help us reduce use rates of cigarettes among kids. Through our combined efforts in the community, youth use rates have decreased to their lowest levels in several years of traditional tobacco products. But there's still a lot more work that we can do, and this ordinance will help us tremendously in those efforts. Thank you very much.
All right. Now to Carl, anyone else that wants to speak to the cigarette ordinance, tax ordinance? All right, seeing none, we'll close it. Now we'll open the floor for the Russell County Meal Tax Ordinance. Anyone want to press it? All right, seeing none, we'll close our Meal Tax Ordinance. All right, at this time, we have a presentation. Mr. Donald Purdy, am I saying it right?
Close enough.
Purdy, okay. Appalachian Coalition for Intervention, the SpaceX Starlink.
Thank you all for the opportunity to present to you tonight on the Starlink project. I am Donald Purdy, and I'm President of the Appalachian Council for Innovation, which is, you probably remember the Southwest Virginia Technology Council. We changed our name last October. And the reason why we did that briefly is because everybody's got technology. If you got a cellphone, you had way more computing power than they had the first time they went to the moon. So we've got that covered, okay? Now, what do we do with all this technology? How do we innovate with it? How do we solve problems that we don't even know we have yet? I mean, that's what it comes down to. We've got to be thinking way ahead of the curve. And so that's what the Appalachian Council for Innovation is about, is connecting businesses with each other and working with state and local governments and with educators to make sure that what we have presented to our workforce, to our youth as they're coming up is the right tools to do what they need to do. And the reality is, in 15 years, there's going to be kids going to work doing jobs that don't even exist yet. We've got to figure out how to make sure that we give them that opportunity to get as much ground-based knowledge as we can possibly get in order to be able to compete with the rest of the world, because that's what we're actually doing. So SpaceX Starlink is a project that started in Wise County last fall. And the, it was a beta test, and it was done to try to reach those students who have no internet access or very limited access. Some of them have hotspots on their cellphone, things like that. But when I was at the presentation that we gave with Congressman Griffith a couple, two or three weeks ago, it was, it was interesting to hear that a couple of the parents stood up and saying that, Dad, take your kid to the fire hall, you know, and sit outside on weekends. Or they had two children in their home and there was only enough broadband to go around for one. And that's not doing the kids any favors at all. So we want to be able to, with Starlink, you're going to be able to actually give, by July, first part of August, internet access to those who don't have it. I mean, it's how fast this is moving. Now, we, the beta test, I'll get back to that just for a second. Right now, there are 45. They started out with a bandwidth of about 80 megabytes, so they're up to 150. We're looking at 300 by the end of this calendar year in December, 300 megabyte download speed. Gee whiz. It's hard to wrap your head around this stuff. We literally started talking about this two and a half months ago, and we've already tripled speed. I mean, it's just amazing how fast this is going. The idea, of course, is to be able to give the necessary broadband for students at home so that they can actually get their homework done. Or participate in distance learning if that's the need. Don't rule out the obvious, though, that we can also telemedicine with this and remote work. And that's vital to what we're going to have to do going forward. So telemedicine is the next biggest hurdle we got to jump, and we can do that with this. Right now, in southwestern Virginia, about 60% of the households, according to the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond, says that they have little or no internet. And that's, I've had internet for over 25 years. I can't fathom trying to survive without it. I really can't. I mean, it's just an essential part of life. I know internet and computers are supposed to make life real easy, and we've been, you know, and that didn't work out so well, but we do have an awful lot of information at our fingertips. So Appalachian Council for Innovation is trying to, is partnering with Starlink. So we are the go-between, if you will. We're the ones that's working with the contracts to work with Starlink directly. And the idea is if we can get six, seven, however many sales you want, because when I, when we first started this a week and a half ago, when I talked to Mr. Lester, we could do 160 account sale. Now we can probably do 120 accounts. Now we can do two sales, maybe even three, by the time we roll this out. Because Starlink is putting up another 200 and some satellites, I think they have tomorrow, and on Sunday, they're sending up yet another one, another full of these satellites. I mean, they just keep sending them up, and the more they send up, the more coverage there is. So we should be able to do by midsummer, probably two or three sales in Russell County and in every county in southwestern Virginia. And that's because we have a champion at Starlink. He kept saying, hey, we need it here. And he just lit up, and you know who I'm talking about. If you're on his email list, you know exactly who I'm talking about. How could you get 1,000 of them every week, which is a good thing, actually? So, and just to kind of get this in perspective, we're talking 360 homes if we do six sales. And so 360 homes, that's going to equate to probably 450 students. That's just if we do the six sales. Again, we can probably double that capacity. So we're, and right now, we're guestimating about 3,000 students in southwestern Virginia in the B Seager region alone that do not have internet or have very limited capacity to it. And these are the ones that just, the business case isn't there for the landlines to get to. And that's always going to be a problem, so. The other day, and you see it up there, FCC approves a Starlink license modification, so what that comes down to is that they've licensed to operate more than 2,800 additional satellites in lower earth orbit. And so think about, well, what is lower earth orbit? That's about 350 miles up. It doesn't sound too low, but it's low compared to the fact that the huge net and dish type networks were, they are 22,500 miles up. And that's the reason why we hit the enter button and you sit there and wait for it to go all the way up, come all the way back down, and then you go, you know, and it just takes a while. 350 miles, the latency's only like 22, 24, 25 milliseconds. Pretty much the same thing as the fiber optic to your home. So that's not bad. In fact, that's fantastic, at least I'm thinking about it. One of the things, another thing is, and this is an unfortunate part of this whole thing, is our area is one of the lowest income-per-capita areas in, well, in Virginia, within the nation. And we got to fix that. And there's no reason on this earth why we can't fix it. But we're going to need tools to fix it. We need things like SpaceX Internet to do that. So kids can get that education that they need when they need it, and they can surf and go and look and see things that they just can't otherwise do. And this is that opportunity to get to those kids. Because, you know, when you listen to that presentation in Wise a couple, three weeks ago, the resiliency of the people in this region is phenomenal. If something breaks, you just fix it, right? I mean, you just, you just do. Doesn't necessarily have to be somebody that went to a four-year college, got an engineering degree to fix it. He just looks at it and says, I can fix that. And they do. And that's what we need to do. We can fix that. And we can fix that and give the kids the opportunity that they need. And that's what this is all about, is making sure that the kids had that opportunity before them. Cost-wise, there's always the cost part. You're looking to buy that $200,000 for 60 accounts. And what that includes is the antenna and a two-year subscription. And we have to guarantee that to Starlink, okay? Now, the antenna, if you haven't seen the antenna, it is just what you have to have at your house. First, you have to have a clear view of the sky, so a tree may have to come down, maybe. Maybe not, just depending on what your situation is. It's a dish that's about 30 inches in diameter, and it is heated. So when the winter time, snow and ice knock off of it. So you don't have to worry about that piece. It tracks the satellites so that it stays connected. There is one wire that runs from the dish to inside your house. That's it, and it's about the size of your little finger. Then it hooks to what I call a brick, which is where the power cord hooks to, and the ethernet cable that comes from the outside satellite plugs into it, and then the antenna on the inside. That's it. There is literally nothing else to it. I've been dealing with networks for 20 years, and that really gets it simple. It really does. So the school system in Wise is working with those who were still struggling to get those things set up, so they worked with them, and that would be, and I would suggest that we do here, because the school systems are going to know where the addresses are, where the kids are that need the help. And if they could, you know, the few that are going to need some assistance setting it up, we'd suggest that, you know, because again, you know, local, everybody knows everybody type scenario. But again, the $200,000 is what you get, and now there's ways to, again, we're looking for ways to buy that cost down. We're looking for different grant opportunities to see if we can buy down that cost a little bit. Another option for you, and again, guys, this is brand new. This has not been done anywhere else. We're literally at the very tip of the spear. So how do you pay for it? How do you get, because you know that there's going to be some that can afford the whole thing. That's again. And there's going to be some that can't. And so what do you base that on? The formula should be a SNAP program, a Title I, Medicaid, Veterans, Disabled Vet Services type of thing. I don't know, I can't remember. But anyway, you've got those programs, and it might be a combination of those programs to use, or it might just be that you find one that really works best for your scenario. But that'll help buy down that cost. And again, we're looking at various foundations and other grants. Department of Education has a grant that we're pursuing, that there are others that are pursuing for us to see about buying down the hardware for about 600 accounts. Things like that is what we're trying to accomplish. So the worst-case scenario is $200,000, and to get to 60 homes. And I would dare say if 60 is the magic number, because 45 was the magic number in November or December of last year, seemed like a long time ago, it was literally just five months ago. It was 45, now it's 60. I got a speaking hunch, it would be 70 or 80 before this is all said and done for sale. Still got to buy the subscription, but I'm just saying we can cover more people because it changes literally that fast. So I would ask that you consider funding at least one sale and trying it, because this is, it's working, and we know it works. Again, we went from 75, 80 megabytes to 150 in literally five months. So we know it works, and we know that it can work here as well. And if we can bundle a package between, because Wise is on board, Dickinson's on board, Taz will, I'm talking to them tomorrow night, they've already shown extreme interest, Buck Cannon and Lee. So we've got a lot of interest in this. We've already got, like I said, three firm commitments now. So if we can go to Starlink with a handful of commitment, that's going to get their attention even more than what we already have their attention. Because, you know, you can't go to Starlink and sign up, do onesies and twosies, right? That's $100, or a million. Which one do you think they're going to grab first? And it'll be the million, and we'll be able to get that, and we will literally be one of the first places on earth that'll have this kind of coverage. I think that's pretty cool, and giving our kids in our area a hand up, a head up, and an opportunity.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Well, one, do you have a business card?
I do, yeah, I meant to hand that up to you.
With some follow-up, can I catch better follow-up?
Sure.
What's the upload speed?
It's usually half or better. Yeah, so if you got one-fifty, you got seventy-five up, and I got twenty-five at my house, damn. And I've got fiber. I guess I could turn it up if I wanted to, and I probably will at some point, but, you know, what I'm paying is not that much different than what this is, which is a hundred dollars a month.
After the two-year, after the two-year agreement, what's the cost go to then?
Don't know. It could stay at a hundred a month per subscriber, or it could very well start coming down as coverage goes. There's also competition. Jeff Bezos is really, you know, now we got the battle of the billionaires, and so Jeff Bezos is wanting to send satellites up as well. So, the second he does that, the first thing that's gonna happen is Elon will probably cut his price, and that will destroy, you know, the model dead. This is just gonna be a battle, and the battle wins is in our pockets, because, you know, price will start coming down, just like it does on everything else. Two people driving competition. And then there's the third outfit that's trying to do this as well. They haven't lit the first rocket yet, and Elon's already sent up, I don't know, I mean, twenty-five, thirty rockets so far. So, he's pretty much got this figured out, so.
In selecting these cells, these sixty connections, what kind of geographical area will that antenna hold? Do they, do they have to be within a thousand feet, a half mile?
Okay, so the satellites and cells will cover about a five-mile radius.
Five-mile radius.
Okay, and so if you think about it, you know, ten-mile diameter, you got two or three cells, pretty well got the county halfway, you know, pretty well covered, especially with overlaps and things like that with the other counties. The antenna itself that you have in your home will just cover inside your home.
It's individual antennas.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
It's not one big antenna, it's individual.
It's an individual antenna, that's correct.
For the geographic area of Russell County, I mean, we're all sitting here representing.
A mile area.
You know, but it wouldn't encompass the five miles. Have you looked at that to see?
I can have proved to actually looked at that, and I think there's like five or six cells, if I'm not mistaken, or four cells, I think, have covered Russell County, I think. I have to go back and look.
Is there some sort of analysis you do to see what areas you can cover with the satellites?
It is, that's way beyond my pay grade, to be honest with you. This is all done by Elons and engineers, when they're figuring all this stuff out, what they're gonna cover. But Jack did get the addresses, no names of the source, but addresses of where the kids were without internet, and provided that with the overlay that he was able to see. And so, he said, "Well, we can cover, no question, we can cover this one, or we can cover this one," or, you know, so there's several that we can cover, and cover, you know, it just got to figure which way you get the biggest bang for your buck, in other words.
That'd be really good for the board to have a copy of that, to be able to see what the utilization areas would be, because what we're seeing now is a lot of unserved, underserved communities don't get, don't get service. And anytime anybody, even any map comes out, usually shows the more populated area and not the less populated area. I'm just, I'm just saying.
And this, the map that I was, actually had the privilege of taking a quick peek at, literally, because it's proprietary, was that there were several cells that covered, again, there was overlap around St. Paul, Russell, Wise, there's an overlap cell there, there's one in Tazle that overlaps, you know, et cetera. So, there's a lot of overlap, so you're gonna get, and if we can work with each county, can work to figure out who gets what, where, and how, you know, that's gonna, you're gonna expand the coverage, in other words.
There are areas that this is probably the only way they're gonna get our service.
I agree.
If it's part of the five mile demographic.
I mean, again, that's just one cell. Again, the more rockets that go up, the bigger the cells are gonna get, the more you're gonna be able to cover in a cell, et cetera. I mean, that's, it's just, it's just a math at this point of how many satellites he can get up, and the rate he's shooting them up there, by July or August, there's gonna be a blanket over this area.
And I think, I think what the community looks at us, you know, "We're gonna spend two-hundred-thousand dollars, and I still can't get access to it, you know, I'm still left out." You know, I mean, that's a huge concern. I mean, I'm in the broadband business, and I own a broadband company, and, you know, I think it's a great ideal, because I think it's so critical for the outlined areas where it's so expensive. I mean, overwhelming expense to be able to get it to the last home.
Exactly.
And every company I talk to, for an example, Clark's Valley in my district, I mean, I've done everything, beg, cry, plead, to try to get two companies that's on one end, another company's on the other, to build that, and look for opportunity grants or whatever.
Camp two.
You know what I'm saying? But I mean, it's something that's such a need, I'd hope that Clark's Valley's within a demographic, you know, but I'm just saying, it'd be nice to know that.
I will go back and get that information and provide, unless you know what all areas we can cover. But I, from what I looked at two weeks ago to what it is now, it's probably covered more.
Depends on how many satellites.
That's exactly right.
Let me ask you, for that two-hundred-thousand dollars, you said that covered the cost of the antennas and a year's service?
Two years.
Two years' service?
Two years.
Okay, two years' service.
Two-year service, that's correct.
And that's only three-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a connection?
As hard as any when you talk about ground costs.
You know, what I've seen, that's probably a pretty darn good rate.
We'll never get wire.
I mean, the monthly fee, I think that's higher than what you would pay now, but definitely.
Oh, well, I mean, as far as looking at rural area of America, I mean, and how, you know, I'm over Dickinson, Buchanan, towards Tazle, Russell, I mean, it would cost me unbelievable amount of money to get it to two or three homes up in the valley, or up in the hollow, across the creek, or whatever it may be. And, you know, it's just something that's desperately needed, you know?
It almost has to be a part of the overall plan for this last mile.
Well, let me give you a little example of how desperately it's needed. I've been working with Scott Kaiser since back before Christmas on this.
Okay.
IT director in Wise County, and I submitted data of all the, you know, the households that we knew.
Right.
Were not served. And we had that data because of COVID and the virtual learning.
Right.
There's over, there's over nine-hundred addresses in Russell County that I submitted. So, they know where the areas are, where, I think, that's what they were using to determine the sales.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, and I was thrilled to think we were gonna get sixty, and now that we possibly make it.
Twice that, or maybe three times that. Again, this is going.
But that tells you the need, and we had over nine-hundred households that said they had no internet, or not enough internet to do virtual learning.
Right.
So, even if you take half of those, that's five-hundred just in our county. So, there's huge need.
So, I'd be happy to answer any question, any other questions you got, or? I know the need is there, it's obvious, and you, I know you guys see it, so it's just a matter of, we're, we're working, like I said, we're gonna be contracting with Starlink directly. So, you would basically contract with Appalachian Council for Innovation to get, you know, and we go from there. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Mr. Purdy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Purdy, I have one question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
On these, has the schools and the counties partner? We have the American Relief Plan that's coming in. Between the schools and the counties, this is applicable cost that can, that's under that program. So, is Wise County and Wise County Schools partner in on this, or is Wise County carrying this on their own from the schools, or is it a partnership?
It's a partnership.
It is partnership.
I don't know how much of a partnership, I haven't gotten into the weeds with that, quite frankly, but, because that was all set up before Appalachian Council got involved, but I do know it would be a partnership.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the information. Thank you.
I'll leave a card with Mr. Lester, if that's okay? Thank you very much.
Now, we have our new business, is the approval of our minutes. Our first one is our regular April, the fifth regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? Spread.
So moved.
Thank you, Tia. Do we have a second for those minutes?
Second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Second one is our budget workshop that we have the following Monday, April the 12th, and Steve, you referenced that date. So, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of our April 12th meeting?
So moved. I like that move.
Okay, Ours and David, second. All right, thank you all. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Cheryl upstayed, since I was not there.
Okay, you got everything then, Walter, David, okay, give it. Thank you. All right, the second thing under new business is to approve our expenditures. Do we have a motion to accept our expenditures for this month?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Lou, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next thing is our committee appointment, and this was under Carl's district. This is for the Russell County Planning Commission, and it was Mr. Edmonds' position for four years.
Madam Chair, I have a question about that. Why is it Carl's position?
Well, it just happened to be the fact that's where Wise is matched.
Yeah, but if I'm, if I'm correct now, explain, the only ones that we've actually agreed that we would have one appointment per supervisor was for the PSA when we did that. We have never formally agreed that we would do one appointment per supervisor for all the rest of these. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not a post-it, but I think it's probably a good idea, but we just need to formally, if we wanna do that, we need to formally do that. Am I right, onesie?
That's at discretion of the board, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think we would, if we wanna do, do that and incrementally work our way into an appointment per supervisor as one comes out, then, you know, we need to formally make a motion to do that.
I have a question also. Before we do that, you know, it came up for consideration about having a board member appoint a physician on these particular boards, and we had talked about narrowing it down to seven on every board, with the exception of those that are, you know, I guess have regulatory issues with the state, like the IDA with the additional two appointments. But that's one thing I would like to see our board do, is trim this thing down to one appointment per board member. We have a tremendous amount of, you know, these appointments on these boards, and I think it really just needs to be one per member.
Their bylaws would have to be, we'd have to read.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand.
Katie, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
I was just gonna say, probably something that you want to maybe consider amending your bylaws to state how committees and boards are gonna be appointed, and then some of their, some of their bylaws may need to be amended if that changes, if they're specifically in there. Some probably don't even mention how people are appointed. But I think if you all wanna have sort of like that blanket rule, that would need to be in your bylaws.
I personally think it's a good idea, you know, and I'm certainly not a post-it, but I just, I don't think we ever really formally.
Formally done it, no.
We just, we agreed to do it on the PSA, because it was completely.
Because when we did that, yes.
Yes, and Madam Chair, if I may, I totally could not agree more with Mr. Eaton and Mr. Breeding tonight. And I don't have a representative on the, on the planning commission, so, anyway, no one from District Two is on the planning commission at this time. So, I think that would be very good if we could just, can we let that appointment ride? I mean, and just not feel it?
He'll continue to serve.
But continue to serve until it's changed, so bylaws are changed. It can continue.
Well, I just think it gives you equal representation, and you don't just keep loading up these boards, and, you know, it would save the county taxpayers money, tell you, I mean, not to have, I don't know, how many is on the planning commission, do you?
About twelve.
About twelve?
Yeah.
I mean, and what do they get on a stipend per minute?
So, you're, so you're not only asking, you're asking to limit the number of people that are on the planning commission?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's different.
Well, every board, except where there's an exemption, every board except where there's an exemption from the state or...
The only one that I'm aware of would be the IDA, where it's written into the legislature that the town has two appointments, and then what?
If you have nine members.
So, we would have nine, you know, and I think it's important we have an odd number each one. So, seven appointments would be an odd number.
Agreed.
And it's nothing personal, it just gives you a balance and level playing field, like Lou said, she don't even have a person on the planning commission, and that's a very critical operational fact for our county. And we all do need one representative that represents us from the planning commission or from the IDA, or from, you know, whatever means throughout our districts to have that voice, or have that communication back and forth to the supervisor, so. I just think it's a great idea. I think we need to postpone this and then reevaluate the bylaws and move on that as soon as we can.
We can make amends to the bylaws for how we all perform, but actually changing the number of certain things.
Can you look into that, Katie, and we can address it at the next board meeting?
Sure, sure, that should be in the technical bylaws.
So, we'll need a motion just to table this for now, and he will continue serving until you come back with the, okay, so I'll take a motion to table this for now?
Ours, ma'am.
Ours, you made it?
My second.
And David, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Mr. Edmonds will continue till Katie comes back with some information for us. All right, our next thing is our citizens' comment period. Please limit to three minutes. State your name and your address. First is Michelle Vance.
Good evening. Michelle Vance, ninety-nine Willow Springs Drive. I'm here tonight on behalf of Amanda Thomas and Southwest Virginia Star Project. She called into the county administrator's office to get information on rental for the old Given School. She was told that someone would have to speak with Mr. Lester regarding this. She received a call back on April the 21st, and I was gonna read, I wrote down everything that was said, but I think it'd be better if you heard it. I have the voicemail message here.
I mean, this is already the voice supervisor's office. I checked on that building, the Given School, and he said it would be too large and too expensive, too much rent, and all that stuff, I believe. So, he suggested maybe you check with C.H. Wallace in the townhome acre there and see if there was something that would suit better than that. But he just, he didn't think that could be used for that. So, all right, good luck. All right, bye-bye.
Amanda's not generally the one to come up and complain, so I took her part myself for her. I'm not exactly sure where you got your customer service from, Mr. Lester, but that's not the way customer service is. It's no one's business how big, how small, how much she can afford, how much she can't afford. If it's for rent, she is due what she is asked. It's a county property, she was asking for information, she was not asking for anyone's opinion if she could afford it, or how big it was, or if it was too big for what she needed. I think there's an apology that's owed to Ms. Thomas and to the Southwest Virginia Star Project. They do wonderful work over in the Honecker area. She is there for everyone that needs help. She is there when someone's house burns down, she is there when someone has, a family member passes away, she is there when someone eats food, she is there when someone needs clothing. There is never any time that Amanda ever turns anybody away. And that, when I heard that, I was just appalled, totally appalled by that. Andrew Hensley could also not be here this evening, and he wanted me to throw this in as well, and wanted to know, since the Given School and Oak Grove School are sitting there empty, why are we still holding on to them? Why haven't we put them up for sale and for auction? It just seems like a waste of money, just sitting there, not being utilized, nobody's renting them, it's just kinda, the buildings are falling apart, so on and so forth. That's really all I have, but I would hope that the board would do something about this for Ms. Thomas, because it's not right. It's not right at all. It's not right at all.
Lonzo, can you provide documentation on the facility itself to her? And reach back up to her, maybe set up a meeting with her in regards to that? You know, I, she has a large facility out there, and I think that they've got it up for sale, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong.
Yes, that's correct.
And I know she does provide an unbelievable service, just like El Guard, the deal we worked out with them on school. It wouldn't be really any different. I mean, if we could come up with a purchase price or, she's a nonprofit in my opinion.
Yes.
Yes, they're a nonprofit. I work for them, down in this in the county.
So I mean, there might be an opportunity for some grant opportunity or something like that. I, I've worked tirelessly trying to get somebody in that, but we had, we were so close to a company before COVID hit. And, you know, it just, you know, that kind of backfired on us, but I mean if.
She holds an auction two nights a week to sustain what she does.
Yeah.
My husband gives his time to do that auction.
Yeah, I mean, if we can come up with a purchase price or a lease purchase or something like it, I mean, just something to put together on the facility. I think it's open for discussion as far as what we can do. We sure don't want it to end up like Cleveland.
Exactly.
And, and as far as that group, I don't, I don't think that group is inhabitable right now. We really, we closed it down because of asbestos.
Yes.
About all that can be done up there, I think, prepared now.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, maybe that's something you all.
You would like to buy a building.
I don't know, how much you myself do?
That's one we probably should do, for auctions, whatever the community center doesn't need there.
We've talked about that, and, and I think the issue is the cost of taking the almacos if they have asbestos.
Yes, that's a, yes.
But that's an ongoing discussion.
Right, next on our sign-in sheet is Sean Daniels. All right, Michael Hayle.
Hi, Michael Hayle, I'm in Russell County, I live on Blake Hill. Been trying to reach out to Carl several times, couldn't get an answer back. So I figured I'd come here tonight to get an answer. Now y'all put county water through there, it's probably on the road, great before that. But since then, I mean, y'all have your county vehicles going in and out, actually school bus going in and out, don't impose any of that. But it does make the road worse. Anything in place to try to keep this road worked, or y'all gonna keep putting your county vehicles on it, school bus and stuff, if so, shouldn't the county take that road over?
Okay, now what, what, what did you say?
It's Blake Hill Drive.
Probably around now.
That's a V dot, that's a V dot wish, I guess. We don't have county roads.
Right. Well, I mean, I just know that the county's getting the water off of it. I mean, I don't impose it. I don't need it, I've got a good well, somewhere down the road my well may go dry. If so, I will hook to the county water. Same thing with the bus, I don't impose that, because I don't want to see those kids that understand the road. But the vehicle's going across, it's turning the road up. Myself and other people live there, they're gonna get ground beside the road, rocks that fell off shale cliff, but in there, doesn't know about fixing. Y'all's vehicles beating it out, we gotta fix it back. Shouldn't be our problem. Thanks.
Next, Austin Keith. Dustin Keith, excuse me, Dustin.
I'm gonna put glasses on.
Dustin will speak.
He's our, he's our, he's our expert, all right.
And Jerry Connor.
My name's Jerry Connor, and I'm 168, mine is drive Castlewood. And my question to the board is, since we're talking about raising taxes on the business owners and such, how come the county can't do something about the illegal businesses that are opening up in the county and find them big time instead of hurting the business owner? It's just my suggestion. So that's all I got to say.
You know, that brings, that brings up the question of a business license again, and we've talked about.
That's a vague thing, we can't do it here.
I don't know.
We can't do a business license here.
No, we can't do a business license as long as we have a merchant tax, right?
That is very simple.
So we just need to figure out how to do it, you know, to, to replace that merchant capital tax. On the merchant capital tax.
No, I'm talking about the business license.
Well, it, it could be, but what, what he's saying is, what, about $60,000 a year that comes out of merchant capital tax? We need to structure a business license so that we can cost it and replace it, so it's not lose the revenue. But the real concern is not knowing who's out there and what they're doing, and how we can help them market, you know? Because there's, I'm sure there, there are people out there doing things, I know that we could help market it, you know?
Yes.
You know?
I'm not on there to speak, but I have phone calls all the time wanting to know how many businesses are in the county, and there is no way on earth to track it at all.
We don't know, we don't know. And I, I think it's something we really need to look at.
And even each town does, like on the, on their website, they don't have up-to-date business that are in business either, they just don't. Like, my website's up-to-date because it's automatic when they pay their dues, so if they're on there, they pay their dues and they have a license, but I can't track anybody else in the county.
Right, anything outside of town?
Yep.
Does Honecker require a business license? So anything outside of town is unknown?
Yep.
Anyone else with a pimple comment? Any other citizens? Okay.
Can I interact with the supervisor?
Yes, come out and state your name and your address. Yeah, we've broken every rule tonight, there is.
Dose Diggison, I'm from down in Luan's District. And I have a problem I've been working on for eight years. And I've not made any progress, so I decided to come here tonight. Well, Harley, I own 25% enters in 216 acres of mineral land on Hamlin Creek. But we just own 25%, but we own other mineral land that, that orders this 216 acres. And my game plan is to have it sold at the courthouse for no, the legitimate taxes. And I've been trying for eight years to get on the list, and tomorrow's sale day, and they keep telling me it's gonna be on the next one. And I've looked, and it's not there. And I was wondering if I could get any relief, I've got a lawyer and a coal broker that tells me that they think that they could merchandise this. And we could put together about 500 acres of coal land there, and maybe somebody might go to work. And I don't, I, for the life of me, I've talked to the people in Han, the lawyers up in Hen, Henrico County? And I, every time I call, I get a little different story, but no action. So I was just wondering if there might be something y'all could do to assist me. You can go to auction, it brings more than we want, we like to buy back, but it brings more than we think it's worth, somebody else alone.
Go, go step further, where the taxes behind, how many years?
About three. Luan, there knows, I've still been here several times.
Thought you said it's 100 years worth.
Yeah.
Really?
But the taxes are three, every how long they go back, three years, I think, is all they can collect is three years, am I correct on that?
So it's over three years?
Yeah, right. But now, hard, we don't own, there's never been no taxes paid.
Katie, is that something?
With Lashia and, and all?
Talked to Lashia, Mr. Thompson, I've talked to everybody that I can think of. We'll be on the next one.
I'm happy to leave you, I'm not the attorney that handles the tax sales, so I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm not the attorney for the county that handles the tax sales, I mean, I can try to work along those, get somebody new now.
Yeah, and a business card, who I can talk to.
Let's be a check with the office.
Well, I mean, you know, what, what this board done initially, you know, is to get a lot of these properties sold, getting back on the records, on the tax records. And, you know, I think this needs to be treated fairly as well as the others.
He's begging.
I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if, if it needs to be addressed, and, I mean, maybe it needs to come from a letter from our board stating that all these need to be looked at equally, and don't put it off. If there's some opportunity, like Ghost is telling us, I mean, if there's an opportunity that, for the economic side of it, we should have done moved on it, my personal feeling, something should have happened.
Who, who owns the surface on that?
The Smiths, lady owns it, but in this deed, and just took a deed for the 216 acres, it gives the right for you to go in there and dig a hole, go down, you can cut timber off the property to, to supply the mine, you can use the rock off the ground, and it's just like owning the surface, in my opinion. Is that right, Luan? You ready?
Yes, Mr. Diggison, it is.
So the surface taxes hadn't been paid either?
Oh, I feel sure the surface taxes been paid. The mineral tax is not been paid.
That's, that's probably what's called.
Now, tell them that you're, you're a 25% owner, but tell them how many you think, how many people you might think is the owner of the other piece.
Well, in the 25%, there was about 100 ours. And in the three fourths, there's about, estimated about 500, and they're in foreign countries. But my, my thoughts were, at the time, I didn't have to do a little reading, didn't do my research, to sell mineral land, you got to have 86% of the, of the ownership to force a partition suit.
I'm always afraid a petition suit might be how you'd have to.
To what?
I think maybe a petition suit might be how you'd have to handle it, you know, to get, to get a judge to.
You can't do a petition suit.
You've got to have 80, about 86% enters in the property before you can file a partition, partition suit. Just have 25%.
That looks like the snag right there, you can't get those.
Yeah, but that's the reason I'm here tonight, I want y'all to sell it for me. But I mean, y'all can sell it, the taxes hadn't been paid.
Just like we're doing the, just like we're doing the other projects.
Right.
The surface.
The surface. The mineral tax.
I can look into, I mean, obviously, mineral, mineral rights are different than land rights, and if, if the, if the real estate taxes for us are being paid, I mean, it may, it may not be quite as simple, but if you want to contact Lonzo, if you have an attorney, it's probably best if I don't speak with you directly, because I don't want to do anything that's unethical, but I'm happy to speak to your attorney if you want me to.
My attorney? Did you ever say that again? I didn't, I didn't know you were talking to me.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you just referenced speaking to attorneys, so I don't know if you, if you have an attorney that you consulted in this matter?
Yes.
Okay, it's, so it's probably not best if I speak to you directly on it, because you're represented in that matter, so I, since I'm an attorney, I would have to speak to that attorney.
Yes, but we, be assured, we want you to sell that and do a great, great work with that, honestly, but this is a quagmire that I can hardly even wrap my head around. And, and we've been at this for a long time. Yes, we have.
Well, I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Any other citizens? Any other citizens in the county? All right, seeing none, we'll place that. Our constitutional officers and reports. Seeing none. All right, county attorney reports and requests.
Okay.
You all had the, you all had the public hearing on the cigarette tax ordinance, and it's something that Lonzo has put together, and I've reviewed, and it's, and we've gone over it with Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer, because they're gonna be the ones who are enforcing and carrying out the ordinance. I don't know if Lonzo's put the rate that he's suggesting yet, he may have to say that. I did have one change, myself, that's not on the, what was put in the board's packet, and that's on page two, under method of payment, subsection B. The way it reads now, it says the Commissioner of Revenue may permit the payment in advance of the tax levied, and I, I, I changed it to require or permit, so, because again, later on in the ordinance, it talks about how he will formulate the rules on how this is gonna be enforced, so, and I didn't want to limit him, if that's something that, that he wanted to require, but it's not mandatory, but that language I did change. Other than that, I just, I, I reviewed the ordinance, and Lonzo, as far as the, the rate, is, is the rate that's in the board packet, the rate that you're proposing to the board?
Thank you, Katie. Right now, in the cigarette tax, I have put in for the amount levied, and if you'll look into page two of seven, and there is hereby levied and imposed by the county if on their sale of cigarettes, an exercise tax of 2,500 1.25 cents per cigarette. That's, that's the way it has to be taxed, you can't, it's got to be, because of the variance in the different packs, you must tax per cigarette, so. But one of the things I need for the, you know, would like for the board to consider is, whatever you tax, if, if this is 25 cents on, on the pack, this, this, 5 cents of this will include administration. Now, whether we had done it when they first proposed it by the state, the state was gonna take over control of this, and they were gonna take 5% off the aggregate at the beginning for administration. So whatever your net is, then you got to remember, 5% is for the administration, for the agent, the machines, the distributor costs, and the additional, you know, work that's gonna be worked on by the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer's office. So I had proposed 25 cents, y'all have been given a list of the other adjacent counties, well, other towns that are comparable. Again, if you're going to do this, then you need to be competitive in, in the same way that they are. So the range would be 25 to 30 cents. We have ability under the Code of Virginia to go up to 40 cents per pack. Thank you.
All right, what's the board's pleasure with this? Move forward, do we have a motion to accept this cigarette tax as it is? Do we need to study it a little more?
Well, I make the motion that we accept the cigarette tax as presented by council and by administrator.
Do we have a second? Do you want to accept it, or do you need to study?
I want a second for discussion.
Okay, see, thank you.
Does this tax apply to only cigarettes, how about chewing tobacco and things of that nature?
It, it only applies to cigarettes right now, that's the only statutory wording.
So it does not snip in any of that other stuff?
That may come, I know it's in discussion, but obviously that would be.
This is cigarettes only?
Mm-hmm.
I've got a question. Well, you know, when we first got elected, we were, I was hounding quite, quite a bit about different issues and different money appropriations that need to be addressed throughout the county, long-term, long-term plan. And like I said at the last budget meeting, you know, I don't think people, they, they will complain and they'll have some issues, but if they knew where their money was going, and some of this is earmarked for different things, whether it be economic development, tourism, or whatever it may be, on any one of these, I think it, it carries a lot, knowing where your money's gonna be spent in that regard. And I know we've talked about it as a board, I've talked a little about it as far as preparations that is spent or earmarking some of the money. One of the things I, I can tell you as a county, for us to be able to be competitive, I mean to really be competitive, is, and I would like for the budget committee to take this upon themselves, but me and, me and Steve hit it wide open in the beginning, but we have a, a lot of things here in this county that we're not as competitive with. One is school teachers' pay. And, you know, if the 5% comes down, also tax on Washington's gonna get the same 5%. So how do we ever, in our lifetime, catch up to these issues? We never do. And we'll never be able to be competitive for people who.
And we'll never be able to be competitive for people who want to move here, live here, work here, build a house here, and to be able to feed their family here unless somebody's going to have to make a tough choice eventually, stating that all these other counties around us are out doing the things that we need to be doing. I know we have a lower population, I understand that, but still, I'm a pretty competitive guy. And for us to be able to get new industry and be able to, you know, and our school, to me, is like an industrial development project. It's got, it's the largest employer we have in our county. Our janitors, our cooks, we're the lowest paid on the bottom, and the highest paid, no offense to you, in the, in the, in the central area. And, you know, eventually, we're going to have to look at those people that's making a considerable amount of money. And I brought it up, I got hammered over it. Freeze that pay and add the percentage of increase to some of these teachers to get them up to the level where we can attract. And I would like for us to look at this, I mean, if we're going to have these taxes in place, what are we going to do with the money? Where is it best spent? Where can we best spend this money to make sure that, you know, we're growing the economy, we're adding more jobs, and we're attracting more people to come and live and work here in Russell County? I don't ever see us catching up, because we can't compete when they're paying ten thousand dollars more per teacher and we're, you know, we're never going to get caught up. And I've had this discussion with Dr. Brown, I've had it with some of their school board members. You know, you can only have so much money when it comes to machinery tool and property tax. And really, you're penalizing a lot of people with that, because you have people that rent, don't pay it. And I mean, I could go on and on, because I dealt with this with the town of Honaker. But I was the guy that implemented the food tax in the town of Honaker, and when I did, that was eons ago. We started out at two percent, but as we built it up, I had one town council member threaten to whip me over, because he said it's a tax, I said, listen, everybody that drives through our county, drives into our town, helps contribute, helps contribute to the balance of the budget. It's not just, you're not just putting the burden on the local taxpayers that live here. So everybody that drives through and they come in to your county, which is an extremely amount of, a lot, a lot of people especially, and we had this conversation about when construction jobs were going on, or when projects like the power plant down there in St. Paul, it's hard to tell how much money we would have generated through that opportunity. So I just want the public to understand, you really can't put everything on the backs of the property owners and the personal property. You've got to look at area ways to be able to generate and let everybody else help contribute to your budgetary needs. By that, I would like for our board to look at how we earmark some of this funding.
David, I don't, I don't think we can earmark this money, because truthfully, we don't, we can anticipate where we think we need it. But I'm not convinced, you know, that that's absolutely where it would need to go. I think it probably needs to go in the general fund, and then we can, as the need shows up. The problem with earmarking is kind of like that lottery, when he was earmarked for schools and about the state, and they got some of it, some of it they didn't, you know. But, you know, this, I think everybody needs to understand, this mandated five percent increase is coming down from the state. The state pays for some of those positions, am I right, Lonzo?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That pays for the schools that are direct, you know, the teaching positions and service positions at the administration level. It also pays for all the constitution officers that are designated, that is paid one hundred percent by the state. So only thing that we have to do is, as far as the, from the general funds, is to fill out what is the county employees that are not state-supported.
And in the past, those county employees and the ones that were not covered by the state had kind of been left behind.
There were many years that they were not...
And we made the decision that first year that we needed to include everybody, play on an equal playground.
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason that we're going to need some of this money. In the courthouse, who knows what, I'm...
One other thing that...
Concerned about it, because of price materials alone.
Yeah, well, yeah, let me say this, what I mean by earmarking is just to have a projected plan. I mean, you know, if we earmark it, if the general fund needs it, they're going to take it anyway. I mean, that's just how it works. So what I'm saying is, if it's a, if it's a, if we look at, like, say tourism, how much money do we put in tourism? How much? How much? Six thousand dollars? And what I'm saying is, if you set a projection on it, and say you had to have the money to fulfill another responsibility, you've got that legal accessibility to do that. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I think the public needs, I think we need a plan, like, long-term, of what kind of investments we're willing to make.
I think we need a plan somehow, and this is going to have to be something that the school board is going to have to work on, is a plan to see how we can ever become, you're right, we'll never become competitive on teacher salaries as long as, you know, everybody does the mandatory duties.
I mean, ain't no way you could...
We've got to look at some way that they can be more competitive, you know. And we had talked about freezing salaries at one time. I can get the, I can get the state average for the teachers, and I can get it for the principals and the assistant principals. I can't find it anywhere for the administrative people, nor the custodians or anybody like that. But, you know, my thought would be that, you know, whatever the highest percentage is, we freeze that one until the lowest percentage comes up to the next highest percentage, you know. But that's a school board decision, that's not our call, you know. But, you know, it really, it really sort of runs in the wrong way, you know.
One of the things that the board has to consider is this, the cigarette tax and the meal taxes and exercise tax. Okay. When we look at who it affects in the, in the population that we've got within the county, you must carve out the towns automatically. So this is not a cash wind file. An exercise tax that keeps you off the real estate and the personal property. If you go back and look at the real estate tax, in nineteen ninety-nine, it was sixty-three cents on the hundred. It was, you know, I mean, sixty-four cents on the hundred, I'm sorry. It's, it's higher today, or lower today than it was twenty years ago. Y'all have not raised the taxes, it's one cent less on the hundred since nineteen ninety-nine. So this is a way to, you know, to be able to fulfill what the county has as services that y'all get. Y'all have got obligations into economic development projects that are coming up. This, y'all will be able to fulfill those things. You also have the casino that's going in. The public will be traveling on Route nineteen fifty-eight, seventy-one, eighty, leaps and bounds coming out of Kentucky and West Virginia. That's who we're trying to catch with the food and the rest. If, if citizens in Russell County wants to go to the town of Honaker, they'll pay ten cents on the pack. That's the ones that live there, the ones that live near Lebanon, the ones that live near Castlewood or the town of St. Paul. That's the ones to catch, but the ones that's coming through and traveling those fifteen to seventeen thousand cars a day, here's V-Dot sitting in the room, they know what the traffic county is on up here. So that's who we're trying to catch. No, I fully understand, I mean, I know we're trying to catch the intake to be able to support the county and not have to go other ways and other, but I know we've got a lot of things and a lot of projects in the realm right here with courthouse and all that. I'd rather for somebody outside the area to help us pay the bills and all the bucks. Right, and Project Jona, you've got these... And we've got Project Standup. Yeah.
It's nice to have them pay some of that, rather than the people that are truly vested, the people that own property and such.
Yes, sir.
Call for the vote, ma'am.
That's exactly, any other discussion, folks? All right.
I'd like to say this, the people that talk about targeting, they also create trash, and that has become a problem. Like, they're winding down on our highways, but who's paying for, especially these out-of-state people?
Yes.
Virginia's taking care of the highways, through taxing everything with Kentucky, Tennessee, West Virginia. They just show a pain to consider though, the purpose of having this tax to help pay our expenses.
All right, with all that said, all those that are in favor of this cigarette tax, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, call.
The next item I have in the meal tax ordinance, and I drafted this and did, and the one thing that I did, I sent to Lonzo with a few questions that I had. And there is a portion in the ordinance that is to help to raise costs incurred by the seller for collecting the packs. And under that, I have three percent.
Lonzo, give her the mic.
I know, we can hear you already.
I thought it was about time you did it.
Do you all hear any of that? Do you want to start over?
I'm starting in place.
I'm sorry, the meal tax ordinance, I did prepare, and I sent to Lonzo with a few questions that I had for how it's going to be administered, the one suggested change he had on the section on page or under the commission to seller for collection of tax. And in the draft I prepared, it allowed for a three percent of a tax deduction. And under that, and Lonzo suggested that would be one and a half percent. Other than that, I did, we did check to see about the collection of the days, and we checked with Commissioner of Revenue, and he was okay with the days that the tax would be collected under this ordinance. But other than that, I'm just asking, we would like to accept this ordinance.
With that, what's a pleasure of the board, we have a motion to accept the meal tax ordinance?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we accept the meals tax ordinance as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
For discussion.
Discussion. This will not apply to the towns who already have a meal tax. It will apply only to the areas outside of the towns.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Three percent and one and a half percent, you said?
Yes, that's under, under the section labeled commission to the seller for collection of packs.
Any further discussion? Any comments?
I do have a question, what's the, what's the meal tax right in Lebanon, does anybody know here?
Six percent.
Six percent in Lebanon.
Same, this is the same.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe that's what it is in Honaker also. Yes, it is.
All right, all those in favor of the meal tax ordinance? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Last item I have is...
Give her the mic again.
Aye.
I'm sorry, the last question that I have is for authorization to do, instead of RFP, it's an RQ, for building construction environmental inspection service regarding Project Jona. And this is again a project that we're working with, with Tazma, the Cannon Counties. And I will work closely with them, I don't know if they'll want their boards to approve it, but really, it's sort of balls on our shoulders to get this ball rolling. And because it is for professional services, we will be using competitive negotiation, which means that price is not the only consideration, we can consider experience and other qualifications and other items, that, other qualifications that we deem important. So I would just ask for the board's authorization to do that on your behalf.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Any thoughts? All right, all those in favor of doing this request proposal for a building inspector-type service for the Project Jona? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have our county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, upon the county administrator reports and requests is the Three Rivers Destination Center, the A R C power ground application for one point five million dollars. This is a power ground application for building an outdoor recreation facility that will be housing the heart of Appalachia in Russell County, and then to enter St. Paul to the Clinch River, Clinch River and State Park. The project will complete the construction of the Three River Destination Center, which will hub for visitors and community members to significantly grow the outdoor recreation in tourism county in southwest Virginia. The center will be located right in the middle of Virginia's Colefield region with access to the Clinch River State Park, the nearby Jefferson National Park, the breaks of Interstate Park, and several of our additional risk recreation amenities. It also, right now, it will build on a five hundred thousand dollars that is already extended in funding from the Department of Community Development and the Tobacco Commission. They have a total combined match already in place of five hundred thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars. So the Destination Center will be centrally located within the Seven County region footprint to promote the area's tourism assets and increased visitation and tourism for the Colefield region. The center will serve as an information hub for all the visitors and visitor trips, to date the region amenities and businesses, and learn about the area's natural assets and book reservations for all the critical to grow the local outdoor economy, create new job opportunities, and help foster the creation of small businesses. This is, again, this is the A R C report, our grant that for one point five million dollars, that has five hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars in match already in place.
I've got a couple of questions on that. Of that match money, where is it coming from, you said?
Yes, yes, sir, it's split between the Department of Community Development and the Tobacco Commission.
So all of the match money is on that?
Yes.
And I noticed here it said, excuse me, I'm not using the microphone. I noticed it said that we're going to create sixteen new jobs. Are those construction jobs, or are those permanent jobs?
On the sixteen jobs?
Yeah.
Those are permanent, with the heart of Appalachia, yes.
So there'll be construction jobs in addition to that?
Yes.
Of those, of those sixteen jobs, I assume this, then we're talking about the projected three-year increase in local taxes. Where are those local taxes, is that a Russell County tax, or is it throughout the entire area?
That's the, throughout the entire region.
Through the entire region.
You just asked.
So that would be probably in sales tax or something like that?
Yeah, bill's tax, yes, sir.
The new wages, a million, one, that would be for those sixteen jobs?
Yes, sir.
Is that over a three-year period, or is that per year?
That's over a three-year period.
Three-year period, so.
And that, at the heart of Appalachia, it's funded by the state, so, again, these are jobs that will be created, but it's not paid by the county.
So it's an average of about twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars a year per job?
It's part of the recreation tourism. This is the proposed sign that's upon, on the screen of the cell that's been proposed to the site. The total project is over two point two million dollars.
Yeah. That's all I have.
More questions?
Madam Chair, I know that we put this in another place, but can I go ahead and get that letter of support for C-Prop money at this point in time, or do I need to wait?
So we need to vote on this, this application first, correct?
No, this is for a report on it.
Record on it, because it's Oregon, she's already taken care of everything. Okay, that's what I thought.
Or you want to move the C-Prop?
Well, now, if I have to amend the agenda or anything like that, I mean, I know we're recording on this now, so this is part of, this is part of the ask that I asked to amend the agenda, just so we don't confuse everybody.
Thanks for your request.
Here's the full plan of it. This is the target area. This is the target area that they're looking at. Next on the county administrator is the county administrator request. This is another project, this is in the Dane area. This is where we utilize AML money grant, money again from DMV to tire down the Old Guardy Lee School. Talking about school report, we asked you to use AML money on this one and they pay, this was 100% grant funded to tire this one down and convert it into a campground. This is the application for the Virginia Department of Health, the Office of Environmental Health Services for the RT Lee Campground for the water and sewer program. I need a motion to approve this and this is the layout of the campground that will be in the Dane community area where the RT Lee School building was and currently where the RT Lee Facebook building is.
Yes, and Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion with much pleasure that we approve the Virginia Department of Health plan as presented.
Do we have a second with this campground? All right, thank yours. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And if I may, not to belabor this, but to clarify the school situation, there was much mold, asbestos, other things in this particular school. It could not be salvaged. And we used Virginia Brownsfield's money to do that. In order to use a Brownsfield grant, you have to have an economic development into it. And I have inquired for the request for the county administrator on the given school and Oak Grove. I inquired to Virginia Brownsfield and they said that they did not qualify at this time. There is a plan being put in place by Virginia Brownsfield, which comes through the Department of Environmental Quality that could work for Oak Grove, but that's down the road. So we do have that on the radar. I have made that request through DEQ, so just not to belabor anything, but I wanted you to do some information sharing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Next on the county administrator reports, the request is the VDOT secondary highway six-year plan that was just presented at the public hearing. Of course, we have representatives, you know, from the Virginia Department of Transportation here, so if they want to speak. These are the changes on the six-year update. The draft of the six-year plan is included in the update along with the draft resolution for the plan as the board required. No projects were added to the plan in January. Remember, we had one in January. The proposed plan for the FY '22 through FY '27 adds Route 824, which is Wall Drive, and Route 671, which is Homeacre Chapel Road. Route 824 is basically the extension of the Tonbes Hollow on which Phase One of the construction is planned to begin this summer with the second and final phase being completed in 22, 2022, sorry. Homeacre Chapel intersects the route of Route 58 approximately two miles east of alternate 58 and Route 71 intersection approximately 1.5 miles. Thomas Warner Road. Also on the notes is Route 615, slide on Back Valley, VDOT is assessing a slide on Route 615 and developing plan action on them. Again, this is Project Salmon, which is the Pure Salmon Project, which is Project Jona. VDOT has reviewed the plans for the connection to Route 19 and the single connection to Route 603, which is 603 was actually in Tassaw County. No other plans have been submitted on the project. The proposed connection and related improvements to Route 19 are approved. But VDOT has yet to receive the required bond for the work and permit on 603 entrance has been issued. The St. Paul Welcome Center, this is actually the destination. The residency understands our plans moving forward on the Welcome Center that it will be in St. Paul along alternate 58. The residency looks forward to reviewing the plans of the project. This is the Three Rivers Destination Center. They call it the St. Paul Welcome Center. The Route 19 commercial entrance improvements, the residency is working with private developers to provide improved access at two locations on Route 19, south of alternate 58 and 19 intersection. This work include improvements to turn lanes near the existing weigh station as well as an entrance just south of the Balaro Gas Station. Those in the 19. The funding opportunities on both revenue sharing and the transportation alternative project grant, which is a campground applications are now being submitted. Pre-applications for both programs are due by July the first, 2021. The maintenance activities, crew, maintenance crews are actively involved in various of activities. Some of the more pertinent activities are on hand, are on hand and machine, heavy and large area patch, both for general maintenance purposes and advancing repaving activities as well as slurry seal of the various routes in the county. That is the notes from the resident, engineer at the Lebanon residency. Of course, this is the notice of the public hearing. We need a motion for the approval of the reservation.
Do we have a motion to accept VDOT's secondary highway six-year plan?
So moved.
Yeah, all right. We have a second.
Second.
Carl, thank you.
Discussion.
Okay.
Okay. One thing I would like to say is I know I've been hounding VDOT pretty heavily about the Horton Ridge curve. You know, I know we've been working on it and it's, to me, it's a school bus safety issue and it's been there forever and it's really a danger. And then we have a lot of, I know we have a lot of secondary type ditch drainage, road issues and stuff. And then guard rail. I don't even know when we'll be able to get enough funding for, to be able to do guard rail in areas that need it, not just replacing the existing guard rail. But I know in my district, it's needed terribly in a lot of areas. So I appreciate what you guys do and I know we work closely together and that, but I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of these issues and I don't know if we're going to get the money to be able to do everything that we need to do. I know how Richmond is, they try to pull everything they can from down here in southwest Virginia. But if there's anything we can do to fight, roll up our sleeves and go after it, I think this, I think we're all going to do that. But we appreciate what you guys do.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of their six-year plan?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, the next one up is a proclamation of the Older Americans Month 2021. That's all, that's applicable to, so.
Majora, thank you. What are you trying to say?
Probably something for me.
Well, listen to the proclamation. Whereas Russell County includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through success and difficulties. That sounds familiar. And whereas Russell County benefits when people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience. And whereas Russell County recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. And whereas Russell County can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, encourage older adults through education, recreation and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore, we, the Russell County Board Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month. We urge each, we urge every resident to recognize older adults and people who support them as essential contributions to the strength of our community. I'll make that motion.
Make a motion, David. All right, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Of course. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have our older, older citizens, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is a request from the county administrator to advertise for the public hearing for the FY '21, '22 budget and set the tax rates for the county for the next public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I'll need, we'll need, we'll need the date.
Okay. Do you all want to reconvene at the end of the month and get it, have it taken care of? And on our June board meeting, we approve the budget and go? Can we do it the end of May? May 19th, 20th?
Yes, we, by the code of Virginia, we need seven days between the public hearing and approval of the budget, PICO. That's for comments. So the board meeting for June is June 7th.
So seven days.
So for us to be able to advertise it in the, in the local newspaper circulation would go out on the 11th, so the earliest that you can have it will be the 18th, 19th, 30th.
Has anybody got prior commitments? 19th, 20th?
Not to 20th.
Okay, no.
Not to 20th.
Not the 20th, okay, 19th?
Yeah, that works for me.
Is it five?
What time?
Now, what, you want to be here at one? Too much work, okay?
Yeah, I work.
Five, five?
Yes, that'd be good. Five would be good.
Okay, five on May the 19th.
Is that, what day of the week is that, Wednesday?
Wednesday, okay. And we have everything set, so. David, Wednesday, May the 19th at five? Do we have a second with them?
I'll say.
Of course. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the, on the county minister request is the advertisement of the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator position. On this position, the board had previously approved a full-time position. I would like for the board to rescind that motion and for a full-time to advertise for a part-time position. I'll make a motion since I made it to hire a full-time, I'll make a motion to rescind my motion from the last position I held.
Second.
Steve, all right, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? One second.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I need to ask you a question. Now, do you need a motion to use the authority to hire a part-time?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's what I thought, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, David, Steve, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of hiring a part-time emergency coordinator position? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the Russell County Assistant Registrar's position, Registrar's position. This was discussed in previous boards. The electoral board has selected one. We need approval for the, this position because it is a county-funded position. The salary is, is 24,960 dollars. I need approval for that motion to go ahead and proceed for hire.
All right, anyone want to make the motion to hire her assistant?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next again is the Russell County Courthouse Custodian Position, advertisement for the courthouse. This is a replacement of, from the custodian from last week. I'm asking for the board's approval for a full-time, full-time custodian positions at the courthouse. So moved.
David, Steve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the Homeacres Land Club, the 2021 Homeacre Independence Celebration has asked for a donation for fundraising for the independent, Homeacre Independence Day celebration.
Let me ask you a question. We've always gave to all the entities that did this, Fourth of July celebrations, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
We have? I hope it is.
We have.
I mean, I think if we're going to do this, I'll make a motion, we do it for all and give them those donations that we've done in the past. So we support them all equal.
Yes, sir.
Is Lebanon having a celebration for?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
We need to get back to normal so we can support them all.
Town of Lebanon, town of Cleveland, town of Lebanon, town of Cleveland, town of St. Paul and town of Homeacre have a celebration.
Oh, we'll be back home and then we do it, okay?
I just think, I know, I appreciate, because I know they had called me about this, having to put on the agenda, but I just feel like we need to support them all.
So what monetary amount do y'all want?
What did we do in the last time?
500.
Yeah, I'll go with 500 again, let's support them all.
I'll say.
All right, and Carl, you did second, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last on the county administrator request is the one that was added for the Compton Plateau Planning District C-Prop letter of support from the board supervisors for the C-Prop application for the Three Rivers Destination Center. Need approval for other support.
There's support.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yeah, Chair, I would abstain because I'm on the Compton Plateau Board and also on the C-Prop budget.
Oh, okay. All right. So we have all eyes except Ferris Steve, he can't do it, stay. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes county administrator request and reports.
Okay. The next is our matters before the board. Tim, do you have anything?
Uh, no, ma'am.
David?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I talked to county administrator about this, about some of the facilities in our county, especially like Homeacre Lillie Field. I've been approached by a lot of the parents down there and I know we have appropriations that we have held back from the board because they haven't provided us their tax return in two years of financials. Over the past, I guess, five years. Five years, yes. Five years. But they are absolutely in need of brick dust. I went down there and done a walk through and a tour of the facilities. One little kid's got hurt because they can't even drag the field. It's been pretty, pretty much disarrayed. I would like to ask the board, or if I have to make a motion, that we get a tan load or whatever it takes to fix these fields. They've got them down so low that there's even like glass looking particles that's raised up out of it and rocks. And it's about as bad as anything I've ever seen. And I, you know, if I need to make a motion that we order a load so we can protect these kids, I want to do that. And I don't know about the other fields in the county community, but I say.
Are you sending brick dust to everybody?
Well, I would, because I think it's such a need.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
I'll even, if I can back up, I'd like to expand that to have a total review of all the facilities. I mean, I mean, I'm telling you, I have been down toward Castlewood and stuff where my son was playing now and everything, but I think we need to review the whole facilities in the area. You don't want our facilities getting disarrayed, you know, and I've always said this, I mean, you want to build something new, but you need to take care of what you got first.
Who is responsible for the upkeep?
Well, the county is the one owns the fields.
Well, we own the fields, but aren't the little leaves?
I've got, well, we've got an issue or a situation there, when we first got elected.
Yeah, I remember.
We asked that anybody we give money to, that they would provide us two years of financials and one year of tax returns.
Yeah.
To keep continuity there for anybody we write a check to. Well, we ended up having a lot of people say, hey, we appreciate you in the past, we just don't want your money though. Well, since then, we got a handwritten, was it a handwritten from, from Homeacre Lillie? It was just handwritten, it wasn't a tax return and it wasn't financials. And so we just don't give people money unless, and we do this with fire departments, rescue squads, everybody. I don't want you to think we're single and.
I don't want you to think we're singling anybody out. This is just an equal way to be able to protect the taxpayers' money. But we have a lot of great volunteers down there, and they, they've called and hounded me to death because they don't have anything to work with. If they had some stuff to work with, they'll fix them. They'll fix the fields, they'll maintain them and keep them up. And it's like that in all of our fields. You got good volunteers, they just need to profit.
Well, I've had, I'm like you, David, I've had calls from Holnaker that their big John Deere lawnmower has gone. It's been gone. Somebody came and got it, and it hadn't been returned. So, yeah, we need to be looking after this.
We are, we are still getting those audits or tax returns from all these entities.
Yes, sir, we are. We request them every budget year. Yes, we are. Okay.
You know, I just, I think we need to do an evaluation of these. I mean, you know, brick dust is kind of a, I mean, I know it's not going to break us to be able to protect these children. I mean, they can't slide at home, or they can't slide in the bases without having to, you know, to get hurt. I mean, I know, I've been in Little League, minor league all my life. I coached, and we probably kept some of the most pristine fields in the area. And it's because we had a lot of good volunteers. But you still got to have a product. If you ain't got the product, you can't fix it. So, you know, I'm going to make a motion that we do an evaluation of all areas, and if it's needed, let's get it.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. What did we do a couple of years ago, Lonzo? Didn't the schools have a big load delivered up to bus garage, and then each field came, got it, and hasn't eaten?
They did, sir.
And maybe we could look at them, that's the same thing.
I agree with Tim. Well, the school system actually should pick up half a tad because a lot of these fields.
They bought all of them.
Well, if they want to buy it again, we appreciate it. I like it. That just settled it.
But I'm not, I'm not saying they will this time.
Thanks, Tim. Did you make that motion?
I was thinking that.
No.
Well, they do.
And they do. And on the Glade, on the Glade Hollow build, you know, that's, that's used by.
Our senior league field is by.
And so is the senior field at Holnaker. And, and the school has volunteered to, you know, help keep the condition on that. Now, as far as the county, and we do work with the Little Leagues. And, you know, we've got, we've got, you've got some Little Leagues that are more active, and you've got someone that's not. So, and we do work with them on this, and we do give the annual stipend to them every year that they can use at will, how they need to do it and how they decide. We don't dictate to them if they provide their financials and tax returns. We don't dictate to them. They, they do keep receipts, they do turn them in. They're very, they do their due diligence, and they're very transparent. They, they stretch it, and they, they work with community in donations. But the, one of the things that, you know, we're driving around this is taking it from, you know, my staff. During the pandemic, there was no one working. So the condition has, has went down during, you know, this year of laps. So, I mean, we can reach out to the school board and see how we can change half of these. You know, we can work on these, these ones that we partnered with before, you know, and of course, the screen.
We need to do it for the season though.
Yes. Well, we'll do it immediately tomorrow.
All right. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Ah, anyone opposed? Steve?
Yeah. Well, wait, I've got one more thing. I'm sorry.
Lord, we got your name, so nothing.
I want to roll this here. One of the things, no, you're fine. One of the things that I wanted to address, and I would like to ask for the board to give us a little bit of understanding or to reach out to some of our rescue squad services. I have been getting calls that, you know, we, we, we give quite a bit of money to these entities every year. And I know this is going to cause a lot of heartburn in my area and everybody else's area when I bring this out. But it's, it's very critical because we fund a lot of these. We've only got two volunteer services in our county. The rest of them are what I consider paid services. They get paid, and they bill people for the services they go out here and do. Now, we have some of these entities out here that operate, and they bill, but they don't get any money from the county. But now, I've heard here recently that some of these entities are going to cut back services and only do perform services that, that get paid to do. They're not going to do transports, they're not going to, and that's to me not meeting the needs of our people and our citizens. When you're just looking to get paid to do something, and you're going to leave somebody out there that you know that has an incident, and they don't get picked up, I have a problem with that. And I don't care who knows it. I mean, I think that we need to have them come to us and give us a list of what services they're willing to provide for us to support them. And if they're willing to cut back and do away with and not do this, I don't think that's right in any regard. Because, you know, you have an incident where you call nine-one, and all of a sudden you have to get somebody on the lower end to come up there and pick that person up? That's not acceptable to me. And I think that we need to, we need to reach out to these people and find out what, what are you, what are you going to contribute to our county? And I think we might have to come up with a pretty much directive of what the responsibilities are to the citizens of the county if they're going to get our money. And I'm just going to lay it out on the line because, you know, everybody's looking to get a dollar. And I understand that because you got to be able to, to do this. But we also need quality services for our citizens. And I don't want somebody to be looked at because, you know, they can't transport them because they don't get paid to transport. I don't know how all that mechanism works, but I know this has really been a bother to me. I've lost sleep over it, thinking about this stuff.
I want to echo exactly. In fact, that was my comment as well, David. Because I've had calls, even from private vendors, that some of the squads are looking at just doing, you know, the services they're going to be reimbursed for. And, and if that's the case, I have a real issue with county contributing any money to them if they're not, you know. Where's, where's the break line between a volunteer service and a group that we're giving money to, and they're competing with a private entity who didn't get anything? I think we just need to review that whole set of circumstances. So I'd like copies of whatever the rescue squad submitted. I want to look at those. Can you give those to me, Lonzo?
I can, sir.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to have a copy too. I'm sure the full board would probably entertain a copy of that to see how that this is working. I know they're governed, I think, in ways that, you know, in that scope of going through.
I don't know how they have a charter or how they're set at, what they're, describe what they do.
Each of the squads have a protocol. And that protocol, within their service area, those maintain. Those, those protocols define what services they are to do. They don't get to, you can choose what services they want to deliver or not to deliver.
Who sets those protocols?
The state.
The state does?
They do, and, and the.
But I mean, is it a mandated thing? And how do you inspect that?
That's part of the operation plan too. That we, we, these protocols are set in place per service area.
I remember hearing, reading that first year, and there were a couple of things that we looked at that, one of the guys must have lived at the station, you know, from the time, what they said they paid him and how, you know, what his final pay was. I mean, he must have literally lived there. So I think it's worth looking at that again. Maybe we've got a little lax on that.
That's all, thank you, thank you.
No, that's all I.
Of course.
I had a matter of, this is how it's been torn down or struck, let's just say structures. It's been kind of a little.
Would you speak his mind?
Some of them been kind of mixed up, a smart structure. They get notification, be torn down, and I've done, run into one or two at least that they were about to have the wrong person tie down a structure. When I say structure, it may be a house, it may not be a house. But we need to be more careful about the notification going out by whoever[1627.14]